Welcome to this special called meeting of the Danville City Commission for Wednesday, July the 17th. The hour is 4:03. Call us all to order. Item two is review and take action regarding proposals received to provide recruitment services of the next city manager. Each of us has received a booklet containing six respondents to the RFP. And with that, Mr. Scott, I'm gonna let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. This is a great opportunity for us as a commission to review the responses we've received from our RFP seeking proposals to aid you in the selection of the next city manager. We have six of those proposals. I don't want to make comments that would prevent you from interacting as you may choose to interact in reviewing these proposals, but I would think it might be helpful to the process of just providing some general comments at the beginning, and then we can take it from there as you may choose. I understand your goal today is to reduce the six proposals down to a more limited number so that when we do Skype those and have more extensive interviews next week, it'll make the job a little bit easier and less time-consuming to focus in on those firms you really want to hear from. This is kind of the first round of that review. In your packet, as the Mayor mentioned, are both the proposals that we have received, and I took the liberty of also including within there a preliminary proposed evaluation form. And I did that in light of the fact that the staff, when we have proposals to review, we have a formal rating process that we do follow to try to help organize our thoughts and compare proposals. I don't believe today that you necessarily need to fill out each of those rating forms. At this juncture, you may want to do that in your final selection process, but I think the question before all of us is what's the most effective process today for us to have an initial review of these proposals, ask questions, and come to consensus regarding what firms you really want to hear more from? And with that as being what I understand to be your goal, I will begin with some comments about each of the proposals. Now, this is based upon where I sit and what I see as the value and experience of the firms. You may have different conclusions as we go through each of the proposals.
I was just gonna ask, I don't, personally, I don't think I'm gonna be able to narrow them down today. I just haven't had enough time to go through them, but I think it would be helpful to hear what you have to say about them and then allow us to go back and kind of peruse them a little more. I don't know what you all think, but maybe that's just me.
Can we, I feel the same way. I actually thought we might get these a little bit ahead of time and be able to have some thoughts when we got here. Can we hear what you have to say, and Mr. Dexter, if you want to chime in? And can we take our forms and then send them back to you?
I think that would violate the Open Meetings Act. You'd have to have another special call meeting to actually take action in terms of expressing your collective views. We had earlier talked about the desire of doing Skype interviews this time next week. And so if we want to delay in setting those up to give more review, that's great and may be very appropriate. Perhaps we can meet even in a couple of days on Friday or Monday to have those, that other, or maybe preceding our meeting on Monday, our regular meeting.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Yeah.
Right.
I like that.
I did attempt on Monday this week to send notice to all of you that these packets were available, that had some problems in going out to at least one member, but even if went out on Monday, it's probably insufficient time to really review them thoroughly. So with that-
I add as a note, too, that oftentimes, as staff, we take the position that it's nice to gather the information and present it with some type of notation on each submission and then allow time for digestion on your part, as opposed to just giving the information prior to any presentation. So sometimes that's a preferred path, I would just say, in theory, and one we employ in most instances. Maybe it wasn't intentional in this case because the information was tried to be submitted to you, but I think due to the complexity of what you're reviewing, and you don't review these daily, and really neither does anyone on staff review these daily, but they are in the business of reviewing these types of proposals for other things in the past. So it would, I think the presentation today would be good. I would just encourage you, whether it's Friday as a special call meeting or Monday preceding the regular meeting, that the narrowing occur.
Commissioner, to your point about communicating with the city manager on questions or your views, I would welcome that as always, but I think if you have those questions or opinions you want to express ahead of next Monday's meeting, that would be wonderful if you would do so. And then I'll hopefully clarify, and you can come together Monday at whatever time you might choose and have more thorough discussion and decide at that time.
And I do remember you telling us that they were up here. I just didn't make it.
Even so, if you'd gotten them, it still was a pretty short notice.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. With that preface, then, let's just go through in a general and brief way about reviewing the proposals. Let me first say, though, before we do that, you might ask yourself individually and collectively, what are you looking for in terms of qualifications to value in any of these firms proposing to be of service? My thoughts sort of are encapsulated in that proposed rating sheet, and without going down each and every one of those items, here's the general overview of the view I have or the bias I may have, and that is, I think you're looking for an experienced firm that has a track record of success in placing city managers, at least regionally and more preferably even nationally, throughout the country. And that will speak volumes in terms of their ability to do so here, if they've done it many other times in many other situations in city manager form of governments. Many of these firms have other services they provide in terms of wage and salary surveys, in terms of specialized service that they provide, and all of these kind of recruitment and executive assistance firms have a variety of services. We're focusing solely on the recruitment service at this stage, and some of these firms have more experience in recruitment and less experience in doing particular studies, for example, in a community to deal with issues. So that's one thing in terms of the breadth of experience and their success as demonstrated by their placements throughout the country in city manager form of governments. The second general criteria that appeals to me is the fact that the project director, whoever may be assigned, would have a background not only of recruiting for those positions throughout the country in city manager forms of government, but actually had worked in a sizable community that had, either as a city manager or as an assistant or another significant level of managerial experience in city government or county government possibly. They would know better, in my opinion, how to, the qualities you're seeking that are successful in the actual work environments. Now, I say that because I have a slight deviation to that bias or preference in that one of the firms that has proposed doesn't necessarily have that background, but they have, in terms of actually working in the city, as a city manager, but they have specialized degrees in data management and a long track record of being successful in making those placements, notwithstanding that lack of experience. So I don't think that's a hard and fast rule, which is something that I think is valuable as you will be talking to the project director and trying to define and refine the qualities of the individual that you're seeking. And if they've walked the talk and been there before, I think they will have better outcomes, probably. So the third criteria, in my mind, is the qualifications of other personnel that may be assigned to assist the project director, and these are all pretty much large firms, and in every case, there are at least two or more people assigned to assist in this process. Those other people, in my opinion, should have professional qualifications similar to the project director, although not as extensive necessarily. And so cost is certainly a factor in terms of your consideration. In our evaluation of proposals generally at the city level, we rank cost not as an ultimate determinant, but rather more in the view, is the cost appropriate for the scope of services that you're requesting to be provided? So cost in and of itself is not an excluder of consideration, but just more a range of judgment, is it appropriate for what you want to do? And then sort of from that point, the question becomes also, are there a lot of à la carte options that are not included in the basic cost? And some of these firms have a little bit more of those that are available, which may be desired, but you have to recognize that it's more cost for those services. And conversely, in the guaranteed pricing of a particular firm or firms, are there more included and defined in that price, such as not only background checks, but also psychological evaluations or Myers-Briggs testing and those type of things? The more in the packet, obviously, probably the better that price would be reviewed or considered to be. And in the proposed evaluation form, I constructed this before reviewing any of the proposals, and mentally, I was trying to give credit to firms that might guarantee their placements for a period of time. I think most of these, or maybe all of these, do, but then I happened to remember that the ICMA professional standard applicable to city managers is that you don't job hunt, or job hop, rather, basically, as a professional standard, you're supposed to stick in one job for a minimum period of two years. And most of these guarantees simply follow that professional standard, so I don't think they're worthy of any particular distinction in terms of evaluation, because that's what people would be expected to do unless dismissed for cause. And some of them say if they're dismissed for cause within that period of time, they will repeat the search with no additional fee except out of pockets, and I think most of them sort of have that approach as well. The other rating methodology thing that I had here, which I think also doesn't really, shouldn't merit rating variance, is whether or not they agree to, in writing, not to, in essence, poach whoever they've placed here within a few, you know, a short period of time. As a professional standard, they shouldn't do that anyway. So just saying that they want is just saying that they are professional, you know? So there are those type of things. I think there are differences that exist among the proposals with regard to the approach taken. Some tell their ability to use media and new ways of communication to reach a broad set of qualified personnel. In fact, most do, some emphasize it more than others do. Others talk about their maintenance of, due to their ongoing activity, of records and files of qualified personnel. They can reach out and seek to get them to apply, because many of them do make the points that maybe the best qualified persons aren't those out there who are looking for work, but maybe already employed in work. And so some firms, more than other, have databases of either prior placements they've made that have been there for a long period of time or that they'd simply maintained. So there's different degrees of approaching how they would market or recruit. So those are just some things to be mindful of, I guess, as we begin the process. These are in your binder in no particular order. They're all in the same order in each packet, but the first proposer is GovHRUSA. They're based in Illinois, Northbrook, Illinois. They do serve municipal clients and other public sector entities on a national basis. Let me also say that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of recruiting firms. There's a much more limited number that specialize in local government recruiting for cities and counties and special districts. All of these in this packet that we're considering are active in recruiting currently and have been for the past number of months or years in the ICMA newsletter, and that was how I originated the list of these for you to approve to send out. They're all active currently in seeking local government, particularly city manager positions. This first one, GovHRUSA, talks under their mid-bullet point there that they are, they have state-of-the-art processes, including extensive use of social media for candidate outreach and video interviews with potential finalist candidates. And some of the firms do say that they will video their finalists, send them to you for review, and you can, based upon that video questionnaire with the search firm, just decide if you want to pursue that or not. They talk, and this is gonna get a little detailed perhaps, and I apologize if I'm getting into weeds too much, but they talk about the organization in terms of who owns it and this president, and they list that owner, Chief Executive Officer, Ms. Voorhees, and her background in public sector consulting work. The consultant assigned to the project would be Sarah McKee, a Senior Vice President. She has a background as a solid wage superintendent and then the Public Works Director for Paducah, Kentucky, and has a degree, undergraduate is listed further in here, I think from Murray State University as one.
Ron.
Yes, sir.
Would it be best served in the interest of everyone's time if we said, where are they from? What's the cost? And what particular differences do you see with that firm? You don't have to compare one to the other, but what jumps off the page to you that says this is interesting?
It would be helpful. It may not be finally determinative in your ultimate consideration, but it would get me out of the weed chest.
Well, and we're all gonna glaze over pretty quick here with all that, when in fact, we're gonna wind up going through it ourselves, but I do think it's beneficial, since we don't do this every day, for you to highlight a unique value that they might bring.
I'll try to do that, although I'm not maybe, at this point in time, precisely prepared to do that, but I'll try to do that briefly.
Before we go any further, let me ask my fellow Commissioners if that's agreeable with you all. Okay with that?
I think you're spot, I'm sorry.
I think you're spot-on. Just do a brief here. We're gonna take time to digest it, just like Commissioner Caudell said, we're gonna take a look at it, and certainly we're gonna probably draw our own columns, and you pointed one of those out, what's the cost? And if I can see value in somebody that costs more than this one, then I can justify that in my mind, but it's gonna take some time.
And are we gonna plan to meet?
Monday.
Monday at four?
Four.
Four thirty?
I'd say we better give it four.
Four?
So we can have a little cushion.
Okay.
About five thirty.
Okay. Accordingly, GovHRUSA proposes a total fee exclusive of travel expenses or candidate interview fees, and that's the basis of all of these proposals. They don't include the cost of those variable costs. Twenty-two thousand dollars for the recruitment effort. In my view, what distinguishes this first firm is the fact that they may have a greater state-of-the-art emphasis on social media recruiting techniques as compared and contrasted with maybe a database of candidates already on file. They also do one-way interviews with their final candidates and send those down for your review prior to you getting to the final interviews you want to interview in person. So all firms meet with you, all firms meet with you to review the qualifications for the position, the skill set, the social skills, and develop a brochure that they use in the recruitment outreach, and to a certain extent, they're all somewhat similar in their approaches.
Just one quick clarification. A one-way interview is the city would have the ability to submit three to five questions for that candidate to respond to, and then you would see their responses before you decided who to interview. I was not familiar with that process. I'm just clarifying that because I learned that through reading this. You may be familiar with it, I was not.
Ron, I just wanna point color of our attention in reviewing these. This firm also talked about a 28% repeat clients. They highlighted that, and I thought that was really neat, that they wanted to call to our attention, they had a 28% of repeat clients.
What percentage was that?
Twenty-eight percent.
Twenty-eight percent repeat clients.
Now, I wanna be careful here, because we're starting to get into a bit of a comparison discussion.
Well, yeah, but I just thought that was, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I mentioned the background of the project director in terms of 12 years of experience in Paducah and her background professional degree from Murray State. So second firm is Mercer, Mercer Group, Inc. They have offices in Atlanta and in Santa Fe. The owner of the firm, Jim Mercer, would be, based out of Santa Fe, would be conducting this recruitment process if selected. The cost for that service is-
Fifteen?
Fifteen, as I wanna recall, plus expenses, and it's a guaranteed price not to exceed six thousand in terms of expenses, so twenty-one thousand would be the guaranteed maximum What's distinctive about this firm is that I think they are possibly the largest firm in terms of placements in the country for city manager positions and have been in business for a very long time. They did assist the city of Danville previously, although they mentioned that, I think, in the proposal. They do a matrix, and they describe how they would evaluate candidates and give you examples of that in terms of, they rate them kind of on an A to F basis, I guess, in terms of candidate John Jones, and they give examples of an A in economic development, if that should be a criteria, A in participative management, communication program skills and so forth, might get different ratings. This one seems to me to have the fastest suggested completion date in terms of length of time, if that should be desirable. The project director is extremely well-qualified, James Mercer. The assistant to the project director has a hyphenated last name, which includes Mercer, that might be his spouse, I don't know, but she has a degree in, I think, psychology or something similar, and they talk about doing mixed Breyer's Test or those type of personality assessment testing, if that should be desired, within the cost included and not an additional fee. So that's that one. Novak Consulting Group is the third one. They have an office in Cincinnati, Ohio, and have a, I think they say they're national in scope, but seemingly in review have a more regional practice in Ohio and other states, particularly. The search practice leader, Catherine Parrish, has over 25 years of management experience working for local governments of all sizes. And their senior associate, Jen Wright, has a master's of public administration, Northern Arizona University, and a BA from Northern University of Arizona. She also has worked in city governments as a deputy city manager, so forth. In terms of distinguishing, in terms of price for fee, slightly higher, just barely, over Mercer at twenty-two thousand.
So far, price-wise, they're all really the same?
They're pretty close, although so far. What you will note when you look through their brochures of who we work for, they have executive search, I would say national in scope from Arizona, Colorado, Kansas, which is a big city manager state, to Virginia, Ohio particularly. So they list some of those. Those are not as extensive as, for example, the Mercer Group, but they have a very extensive practice in terms of organizational assessment and optimization, where they go in and do in-depth specialized studies. That seems to be another area, a larger area of practice of that firm. They also, I believe, and this is distinguishing, two of our firms proposing are certified women-owned businesses, and this is one of those two. The third firm, or fourth firm, excuse me, Ralph Anderson Associates, they are a very large and well-known executive search firm, providing also management consulting and human resources consulting. They're based in California. Their practice largely centers in California, and they have a Florida office, and so they practice extensively on both coasts as well as in between, but California seems to be their largest concentration of placements. They have the files of all their staff assigned. Let me comment upon those just a moment as I- Project Director is Mr. Robert Burge, B-U-R-G. He's Executive Vice President there. He's a total of 40 years' experience in the area of government, and he has a BA in economics and a master's in business administration. The price of that firm, this was the higher pri- The price of that firm, this was the higher-priced firm of the six, fixed fee of $35,000 excluding expenses, and there were a fairly long list of optional services and additional fees that could be brought to bear if you desired.
California and Sarasota are expensive to live in.
Again, they have high success in California, and I think in Florida, and in some other states in between.
But they do list the city manager, former city manager of Cincinnati as a reference.
As a reference?
Uh-huh.
Right. Okay. And there's examples in each of these proposals of their brochures for recruitment, and they recruited for the city manager of Cincinnati, 2013, I think. The fifth firm is Slavin Management Consultants. They're based in the south, I want to say in Georgia, but let me double-check that. The owner of the company, just like Jim Mercer, in Mercer's case, Bob Slavin, the owner, would be conducting the search personally. His background is interesting because at one time he was a partner of Mercer and then split off and formed his own company. Their price, total professional fee, is $15,855 plus expenses not to exceed 23,355, so right in that range, just a little bit higher. The qualifications of the two individuals are very good. Bob Slavin began his local government career in 1967, 12 years working directly for local governments, and seven years as principal consultant with the government search practice of Corn Ferry International, the largest private sector search firm in the world. He headed the local government search practices for Mercer Slavin Incorporated at the time, and so he formed his own firm after that, so extensive experience. I'm not sure I can succinctly summarize the distinction that his firm does in their search methodology, but he talks about it lengthened here in terms of using a, quote, "critical path," unquote, search process that allows us as a client to focus attention on the...
Hey, Ron, one of the things that jumped at me on that area, and maybe they all do that, which is really my question, is we will meet with each commission member individually and with the commission's approval, with staff and community leaders, to learn the city's needs, focus, and requirements, yada, yada, yada. Do they all do that?
They all, depending upon your direction. Now, they talk about this in terms of identifying the critical success elements, and they'll interview you, and if you agree, they will want to interview my peers or their department heads, and most will also say, if you wish, have discussion with community leaders with regard to their views on criteria or elements for success of the next city manager. They will all do that, I think, but that would be a point of clarification as we do the interview with the firms.
Sure. Thank you.
One thing that was interesting to me about Slavin's clientele list, which you will see, is quite extensive, as well as the more recent chief executive searches are most extensive throughout the country. He also has in the following that, the name of the client, the position recruited for, and noting whether they are a minority class or not in there, and so they are sensitive to recruiting women and minorities for that position, for positions. And the final proposal was from S. Renee Narlock of Tallahassee, Florida. This is the second women-certified business. Ms. Narlock is the owner of the business, and she served as a senior vice president of recruitment for a national public sector consulting firm, active in 40 states for 25 years, quite extensive experience in the field. She lists in her opening there some of the many cities that they have been successful in recruiting for, Franklin County in Columbus, Ohio, for example, Virginia Beach, Virginia. One distinction among all of these firms is whether they recruit for cities of size, similar size or larger size, or just a variety of very small towns. This one seems to have experience in larger communities of our size or greater, and that's not necessarily distinctive from some of the others, but...
Well, and the other thing on that front is, they may be larger, but for a city our population, it's a complex city.
It is, it is.
With a water department and all that.
It is, and some of the other proposals who list a village manager, for example, in a small town, they might not have nearly the complexity and size of responsibility that exists here. This firm proposed a cost, and let me find it, if you have already found it, say that. I think it was very similar to the others. It eludes me just a second. Page 12. Page 12. Yes, thank you. So, $16,450 plus $7,500 in travel expenses. This firm also, like some of the others, but not all of the others, maintains an extensive database that they would utilize as part of the effort to identify candidates that might be interested. This firm also, I like the fact that they did include some letters of reference already from prior work they have done among folks. And maybe as a final comment, if I can think of one or two or three. Some firms seem to emphasize the fact that they maintained and had databases, which would be beginning points in this search. Others seem to be more of a, just an outreach over the net to try to identify kind of a fresh candidates. So, that's maybe a distinction. Ultimately, I think any of these would do a fine service for the city of Danville. It's more a case of what process you prefer, what timeline you're comfortable with, what deliverables you want to have by certain dates, and whether the candidates can meet those, such as when they meet with you to discuss traits of the ideal candidate, and when you want to see a brochure of Danville that they will use to market the program, and those types of things. And I would say that seemingly, some differences exist in terms of how personal the firms, how much attention they will devote in speaking directly with individual candidates in the final weeding out or selection process to get a set to you. Some seemingly put a little more emphasis in that than others might. For example, one will do the one-way video interview and let you look and select. Others might question in depth or do a Myers-Briggs test or something, and then internalize and come up with those final candidates for you. So, I think you have a lot to consider and to think about. Maybe there's clarifications that you want to send my way between now and next Monday, and I'd be happy to respond to those, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have now, if you're ready to comment or make those.
You talked about the database versus the outreach, which, what would be the benefit? I mean, which one would you think would be, yield the best results?
Well...
Or combination thereof?
Society is aging. It depends on your candidate.
I think you get personal.
Yeah, well, personally, I think you need a candidate who has some experience under their belt in a similar city, so you're not starting new with a person who, so you want that. Candidates that have been previously placed by one of these firms who may be ready for stepping up or a move or a retirement community, whatever, I think that would be a better point to begin than just advertising anybody out there, myself.
That sense, yeah.
Now, that's not to discount the fact that we're all, as a society, getting older, and you're going to want to recruit younger folks here, but some with experience. You know, I think you want someone, unlike me, who might have a staying power for a longer period of time, if you've got the right experience and it's the right fit and meets the objectives of the commission, you know, every year.
And the average stay is seven, eight years?
Well, I think it used to be much briefer. I believe it's at least five nationally now, and it might be approaching seven. I don't think it's beyond that, but I'd say it's five to seven, and I'd have to check the data. I do know that the demographics of the applicants, they're getting older, and they have more experience, but your younger folks aren't entering public service in any sort of meaningful roles, whether it be city manager or police officers or whatever. There's just a whole nother generation at work, and if they do enter local government or nonprofit business, they tend to go to non-government, more to the nonprofit side. So, you have those dynamics at play, I think.
Well, and I say that as a context that this is not, this is not a 30-year decision.
It's not, it's not. And, you know, the strength of the city manager form of government, if I may say that, or the council managers that's known nationally, is that there is accountability to the commission as it is elected and as priorities change, and the accountability to your employee is you have to measure up or you do get replaced, and that's the accountability to the public. So, it's intended to be a good placement and one that's successful for a period of time, but that all depends upon, you know, performance and willingness to work apart.
It sounds a little bit like we're formulating some questions when we get down to three and actually ask those folks that do recruiting, help us form our opinion as we look at the candidates they bring us. We appreciate what you've done. Don't mean to speak for the whole commission, but I think I can, all this work that you brought towards us, and again, I think, as has already been suggested, we need to dissolve this a little bit and come back together on Monday, but I think there's some important things here, and I was really pretty impressed with a couple of these folks. I know some of you folks sitting out there can't see all this information, but what they did brochure-wise was almost PR. It looks really nice, looks like something CVB did for us, so it's really nice. Look forward to talking to some of those folks about that.
Everybody knows where the swag is. Why do I feel like, why do I feel like I'm getting ready to try to make a swag?
I wanted to point out to the commission, I'm sure you've been watching this through the proposals as well, but you'll notice that the average timeline between the firms is respectfully about three on the short end, but to four, five months. So, with that in mind, and with respect to your decision to digest the information you've been presented, I just encourage swift resolution.
Keep moving.
And so, I think it might be beneficial, I know we're trying to keep within an hour today, which means we have 12 minutes, or maybe less if you want to, but I think it would be beneficial to, at least at each time we meet on these special meetings, to reiterate what your next move is and the one beyond it. So, if you're thinking you're going to decide Monday to narrow it to three, what's the next step? When are you going to actually make the selection? Because if you, theoretically, if you employed a firm starting August 1st, which would be pushing it now even, then you're looking at, if it was three, that'd be August, September, October, not, you know, not making a decision until the 1st of November, and that's if you hired someone, a firm, beginning August the 1st, which you may or may not be able to accomplish. And that's on a three-month window, which is on the short end of the timeline. So, you're probably looking more like a December 1 finish line if you started August 1st. My point being, when do you anticipate making the selection?
Previously, we had talked about next Wednesday during the Skype interviews, and then flying in and making that decision that day subject to a personal interview that would occur first two or three days in August, where that consultant would come in, present a contract, and have final questions and so forth. And I suggested at that time that, to be efficient about it, that the consultant might be prepared to interview the commission regarding traits and skills of the manager and some of those beginning questions. So, the decision would, at the earliest, be August, as you've said.
Okay. Well, then, if that is, if that is still the case and the pleasure of the commission, I mean, I think that's laudable, and if you can still stick to it. I just think it's important that we continue to talk about that deadline, so you know what you're up against.
Should we make our decision by Friday instead of Monday?
Yes.
So, from Friday to Wednesday, we'll have time to schedule, hopefully, the Skypes?
We can schedule, I think, within a day or two, and if, even if you make it on Monday afternoon, we can still likely schedule the Skype interviews for Wednesday. So, I don't know...
Wednesday afternoon?
Yeah, we talked about noon is your afternoon, given the potential for different time zones, but, you know, you could, again, and it's only maybe a few extra hours of work, but you could schedule interviews with all of them if you wanted to do so. But if you're looking at all of this and you say, why go that extra step if we know we're primarily interested in this smaller set, that's what we should try to do Monday.
Do you all think we should do it Friday instead of Monday, or does that give you enough time?
I can't be here Friday.
I can't be here Friday either.
Okay. Monday it is?
So, the question now, in my mind, is, do you want to Skype two, three, six? I mean, in the interview, in the interview Skype process for our strategic plan, we did 14.
I had forgotten that. How many days did that take?
Oh, there's days.
Well, we, you know, there may only be two that really jump out at us, so, I mean, I think a minimum of three, and surely we can narrow it down to three from six.
Like we said from the beginning, if we can have the numbers as a goal and not really hold it to it rigidly, but if you say, if you could each come prepared on Monday with your top three... your top three, just ideally, and if you felt compelled to say, but ah, I really couldn't decide between firm three and four, then voice it. And if the other people feel the same way, they may collectively decide the same thing, but if you're the only person who has any interest in that one firm, that may be your decision as well. So if you have the goal of coming on Monday with your top three firms and sharing that, they may all be the same, and if so, it'll be a short discussion. But ideally, it would be nice for each commissioner to say, my top three are X, Y, and Z, and as you come Monday, however you determine to rank them.
Ron, I want you to go through and score them yourself. Hold that to yourself. Once we make our decision, let's compare notes.
I can certainly do that, and I, in my own mind, have already done that, but it's your decision, not mine.
I would like to also suggest, along Attorney Dexter's note, that I'm going to up the ante and say, let's focus on two, and if we have to go to a third, that might move the process along a little bit better. I think we can do that, at least think that way. We're coming with our top two.
I think the nice thing is, in a review of these proposals, you have six qualified firms. Some, I think, would frankly do a better job than others, but I don't read anything that would make me feel like any would do a bad job. So that's positive. So in light of that, I think that is a, that would be a great goal, if you could come with your top two.
It's a matter of what would be the best fit for us.
I might express the view that a collective group decision is better than an individual decision, and when you get down to the smaller number of two or three, it might be difficult to judge the top firm, but I think collectively you can do it, and may do it better after a Skype interview than you could do, you know, before that. The difference is kind of, to some degree, diminish after, in my mind, you get to three, for example. And so the presentation and interaction with you by Skype might make all the difference in terms of who comes out of that process.
Yeah, we found that out in the other one.
And then the second thing, I have a complication for Wednesday, and I'll try to figure it out, but if Tuesday or Thursday or Friday would work better for this commission and the staff, that would, that would solve me from trying to work that out.
You can give up the bike riding on Wednesday.
What's that?
You can give up the bike ride on Wednesday.
It's not a bike ride.
Let me urge the commission to try to stick to the agreed-upon schedule because complications of staff schedule, if I can say that.
Well, looks like we got our homework.
What's that? Sorry?
So it looks like we have our homework.
I think so.
I think that, unless somebody has something else to say, I think that concludes our business today.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, and in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's like sign.